We're going to call this meeting to order. It's the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It's Monday, April 26th, 2021 at 7:03 in the evening. We have no reportable actions to convey from our closed session meeting. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their name and/or phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comment. Persons who seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Santiness?
Here.
Your pro Tim Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Coops?
Here.
To let the record show that all members of the city council are present. Due to legal requirements for the redistricting process, we will consider public hearing item number 9A ahead of the rest of the agenda. Mr. Stewart?
This is consideration and possible action regarding conduct of a public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the redrawing of election district boundaries. And as noted, this is the first item on the agenda and Randy, who is doing the staff report?
I can do a brief introduction, Jeff.
Got it.
So every 10 years, cities with by district election systems must use new census data to review and if needed redraw district lines to reflect how local populations have changed. This process called redistricting ensures all districts have nearly equal population. The redistricting process for the city of Bellflower must be completed by April 17th, 2022. So this is the first of four public hearings for the redistricting process. Our consultant, Justin Levitt with National Demographics, is here to make the presentation this evening.
Thank you, members of the city council, staff and members of the public for being here tonight. Let me just go ahead and share the presentation. I also wanted to just say that Douglas Johnson, president of NDC, is also here tonight in the audience as well. And I think between the two of us, we can answer all your questions and get this process underway. So kind of going into a little bit more detail about what we're starting here tonight and what will be continuing through the spring. Redistricting is a process that we have to complete every 10 years following census, following the decennial census. Every 10 years, we get new census data. And you know, some of you may this morning, they have noticed we've got our new apportionment data on how many congressional districts California will have. Over the next few months, as I'll talk about here in a second, we're going to get local data down to that block level, very small units of geography. And we need to use that new block data to adjust the boundaries of the voting districts if necessary to account for population shifts. Now, this year, unlike 2010 or on the 2011, we actually have about four or five times as many jurisdictions redistricting. Over 500 jurisdictions across the state will redistrict this year. And because of this, or in part inspired by this, the state has passed new requirements on the districting process, some of which such as the Fair Maps Act, AB 49, have only been passed in the last year or two. So even when Bellflower transitioned to district elections just four or five years ago, the Fair Maps Act was not applicable yet, but will be in this process. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that throughout my presentation. The final map will be adopted by April 17th, 2022, so that it can be implemented by the November 2022 election. It will be used for the next 10 years and then in 2031, you'll have to take another look at the district lines again. What does the districting process look like? Well, the redistricting process looks a little bit like the districting process that the city went through a few years ago. At first, there'll be a round of community outreach, including public hearings, workshop, public mapping tools to give the public the data and help that they need to draw their communities, draw potential lines on the maps and provide their feedback and analysis onto the process. Then following that, as we did before, we'll have draft maps and we'll go through a process of narrowing and selecting a final map. Unlike the previous process that the city went through, COVID-19 has impacted the process in a few ways. The first is the delivery date to the census data. I would say normally we should have had the census data by now. But unfortunately, the census data will not be available until mid-September if we're lucky. And I'll talk about that in the next couple of slides. In addition, for the redistricting process, you're required to have four public hearings. This is the first one and at least one of them has to happen before a draft map is drawn. And at least two have to happen after the board draws draft maps. In addition, at least one has to be held on a weekend or after 6:00 PM. That's not a problem for Bellflower as you know, we meet at 7:00 PM here. But for many counties and other jurisdictions that meet in the morning, they're going to have to hold a meeting outside of their normal time. I mentioned the AB 49, the Fair Maps Act. And what that has really had an impact on us in terms of what factors we have to consider when drawing district boundaries. Instead of a number of criteria that are just kind of meant to be balanced against each other, AB 49 specifies a rank ordered priority list of criteria. So we have to look at these criteria in a particular order this time around. First and topmost are the federal laws. Districts still have to have the same number of residents, give or take. They're still allowed for a little bit of flexibility for local governments not to have perfectly equal districts in order to account for your communities and neighbor keeping neighborhoods together and that sort of thing. But we are looking for districts that are substantively equal in terms of the number of people they have. And for this, it includes everyone, total population. So it includes non-citizens, it includes non-voters, everyone who is counted as part of the census. We also then have to consider the Federal Voting Rights Act. In particular, we have to look at your communities of interest or protected class communities, groups that have historically faced discrimination or barriers to registration and voting. As part of this analysis, we have to see whether or not there are any concentrations of protected class communities, areas that are heavily Latino or Asian American or other protected class groups, African American or Native American, to see whether it's possible to draw majority, non-majority districts of that particular protected class. Furthermore, the Supreme Court also says that race cannot be used as the only or even predominant factor as part of drawing a district line. This is partly how they've interpreted provisions of redistricting over the years related to redistricting in the Voting Rights Act and elsewhere. Race cannot be the only factor to justify a district. Now, after those federal priorities, the state now sets out a list of rank ordered criteria in the middle column here. The first is that districts must be geographically contiguous. That means that all parts of the district must touch each other. You can't cross a corner, you can't cross over, you know, county island or unincorporated pocket within the middle of a city. Contiguity is defined as all parts touching. You know, the idea is that you should be able to walk or drive from one part of a district to every other part of that same district without leaving the district. The second is undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. Now, AB 49 very specifically says neighborhoods must be remain undivided. It doesn't define what neighborhoods are. It defines communities of interest as socioeconomic geographic areas that should be kept together for the purposes of good representation. It still leaves it up to the community to define what the communities of interest and perhaps even what the neighborhoods of the community are. And that's one of the real main purposes of these hearings that we want to hold before we draw any district maps, to find out what your communities of interest and neighborhoods are, to consider them as part of this criteria. We're actually asking hopefully that either the council will adopt a list of neighborhoods or communities of interest for the purposes of this new AB 49, this new law. The third rank ordered criteria, easily identifiable boundaries. The suggestion is that it follows major roads or natural or other geographic features so that people are easily able to tell which district they would live in. Fourth, compactness. Though AB 49 defines compactness as not bypassing one group of people to get a more distant group of people. So what that means is that districts that try to link communities that are not adjacent to each other may run afoul of that compactness provision. But note that if you can justify that with reference to anything above it, then you may be able to do that if needed. Finally, the criteria also prohibit looking at political party favoring or discriminating against a political party. Now, once you've looked at your rank ordered criteria, the bill does allow you to consider other traditional principles, such as respecting the voters' wishes. The voters have elected council members by district. And so we can look at, we can look at that factor after we've considered all the other factors. Similarly, we want to look at future population growth. Where do you expect there to be growth between 2020 and 2030? And also factors like minimizing the voters that switch election cycles. So that those voters who vote last voted in 2018, most of them will hopefully, as many as possible, get to vote in 2022 and are not moved to a 2024 election. And they're going six years without voting for a member of the city council. So we are looking at your current districts as part of this process. We have your, simply your district map on the left and on the right, we have it overlaid with where your Latino population is. The areas in pink and blue, we see a little bit of that most directly at the southern end of the city, are under 35%, so less than a third Latino. On the other hand, the areas in pink and yellow are over two-thirds Latino, so above 65% Latino. And for this, I should note, we're using citizen voting age population or SEVAP. That's what the courts call the eligible voter population. Those who are citizens and are over the age of 18. While it's not a perfect measure of eligibility, it's what the courts have generally been using as this measure of potential voters. So we want to include not just those who are registered, but also those who could potentially register and vote. Now, over the next couple of months, I think especially in the next month in particular, we are going to be launching, rolling out a number of map drawing tools for the community to use. These map drawing tools include paper only maps that you'll literally be able to take a highlighter or Sharpie and draw the district or community boundaries that you think makes sense to keep together. We also will have Excel supplement kits that give you a little bit more information about the population in different areas of the city so that you can use that to come up with your own population totals and understand the demographics or the, you know, what your districts would look like numerically once you're finished. We also will be providing an online map drawing tool. One that you'll, you know, actually we'll have two of them. The first will allow you to draw your community or select the areas or even pencil in online where your community is. And for those of you who really want to get into this, we'll also have a tool that's just like the tool that myself and Mr. Johnson use when we draw maps. We can go block by block, looking at all that demographic detail and creating the district map that we want or that you want to see for your city. I'll also encourage you to think about not only the district map as a whole, but specifically your section of the community. If you feel you don't know the entire city of Bellflower well, it's all right to submit a partial map that just shows one district or just shows one area of the city. In fact, I would say we really encourage that because, you know, you know your area best. Don't, you know, we often run into people who will produce whole districts, so whole city maps, who just kind of draw the lines wherever outside of their neighborhood. And, you know, they find that other people are like, why did you draw this line in my neck of the woods the way you did? So it can be really tempting to want to fill in the whole city map. But if you only want to focus in on one community or one area, that's fine. We'd love to take those as well. As part of this process, we will be working with your outreach consultants and city staff to educate residents, inform them on the process, help them understand the laws and help them provide advice to the council on, you know, input to the council on which maps make the most sense for the city. What changes to the current district maps could be made or should be made. We really want to emphasize that if you don't speak English, then we, you know, please contact the city so that we can reach out and work with you on providing services to non-English speaking groups and other, any other groups that have, any other groups that are, you know, new to this process or feel like they need more information, need more help, reach out to us and we're willing to work with you to inform you about this process. Just to kind of briefly walk through the timeline for this, because we're unlikely to receive the census data before, you know, mid-August at the earliest. And once, once the state receives the census data, the state then has to go and modify it to remove the prisoners from the prisons blocks and reallocate them to their home blocks. We're not expecting to get census data to use probably until the end of September or early October. And so what we want to do, however, is use this time to go out to the community and start talking about community of interest, start educating them on how the districting process works and start really getting that information we need so that when we get the census data in October, we hit the ground running. And between September, October and January or February, we really will be creating the draft maps, revising the draft maps and working toward that final adoption by April 17th, 2022. The district has already set up a basic website online, drawbellflower.org, so that if you want to stay up to date on what's going on, if you want more information and eventually if you want to look at and use the map drawing tools as well as see any of the draft maps, they'll all be available on drawbellflower.org. And so with that, I thank you for your time. I look forward to any comments tonight. And we look forward to working with you throughout the next six months as we work through this process. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Mayor Pro Tim Ray Dutton, have any questions of our presentation about redistricting?
No, I do not.
Councilmember Victor Sanchez, any questions on redistricting?
No, sir. This is all fascinating stuff. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Sunny Sanñez, any questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mr. Levitt and Mr. Johnson, were you involved in our redistricting process? The last, the first one that we had, I think, if I remember correctly, whether it's 17 or 2018?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to express my appreciation, if I forgot to appreciate you back then. You did a wonderful job in the first district thing. I didn't call it the district thing because that's our first time that we did it. And because what I think what really was very prominent was the dividing line among districts is you followed the natural dividing line, such as roads and streets and things like that. So there was no, I didn't see any gerrymandering, so to speak. So, and the other thing I want to point out is that is the beauty of a local election. It's nonpartisan, so we don't have to worry about Republican or Democrats or Green Party, whatever. It's basically just the voters of Bellflower. So having said that, Mr. Levitt mentioned about seeking assistance from the council in terms of defining neighborhood or communities of interest. Can you help me understand what are you looking for? In terms of definition of neighborhood, neighborhood or community interest, how can we help you?
Yeah, and Doug will probably want to chime in here too a bit. The new law, AB 49, defines communities of interest as areas of similar socioeconomic status that should be kept together for the purposes of good representation.
So what do you mean by socioeconomic?
So socioeconomic could mean are, you know, similar to what brings neighborhoods together anyway. Areas that are heavily rented versus areas that are heavily owned. Areas with a lot of multifamily housing versus areas with a lot of single family housing. Oftentimes, it's a shared history or shared community identity, projects that were built at the same time or that send their kids to the same school district or seems elementary school. Areas impacted by the same issues, such as traffic along a particular road or shop at a specific mall. Every community has different communities of interest. I noticed we didn't have our traditional slide in there on what communities of interest are. But one of the interesting things is that the law specifically says should be kept together for the purposes of good representation. And it's not entirely clear what that specifically means. Like if you say like, well, this area has a lot of similar features, do you then have to keep it together, no matter what else you do? Or is there some wiggle room to say, well, but it doesn't, this area doesn't benefit from one district? In fact, this area needs two, so we're not going to say this is a community of interest?
Yeah, I would just add, we think of it as when, when you talk to other people in Bellflower and you ask, well, what part of town are you from? You know, how do they refer to the different parts of town? Those are very good neighborhood references, whether it's like doesn't set up an area around a park or homeowner association or a block of rental units. However, people identify where they live within the city. That's what we're looking to find out.
Well, I believe for a long time, I think the only two sections that I've heard so far is the horse country, that's one area. And when somebody mentioned about North Bellflower. And other than those two terminologies, I haven't heard of anything else. As I should define as community, community, communities of interest. So it's going to be fascinating to learn this as we go along this process. Now, in the last exercise we had, did you come across any communities of interest?
Well, we had lots of testimony about which maps people liked. And communities of interest, as Justin covered, were not nearly as prominent legally as they are now. But we still got references to this map was better because it doesn't cut through my neighborhood versus that map does cut through my neighborhood. So we got it more indirectly last time and driven by the specific maps. Now, the law has elevated this and brought it up front to more of an emphasis up front to try to identify these areas before we draw any maps.
Okay, okay, very good. Now, if somebody makes a suggestion in terms of how a particular district has to be drawn, does that person need to provide justification?
I would say that it generally helps because especially as the law says, areas that are similar. What are the similarities that bring that neighborhood together? What is it that makes it a community? Particularly when it comes to the Voting Rights Act, we've been doing this for decades. You know, we can't just say, oh, this is the Latino neighborhood, so we're keeping it together. We need to be able to justify it with reference to income, education, occupation, you know, housing, that the shared history of the community. And so I think what this law does is it, you know, it suggests, we, you know, if people want, when people make comments about their neighborhood, what makes it, you know, what brings that community together always helps.
And I would remind people ultimately, when they're drawing a map, it's still the council's decision in the end. So they are wise to include a description of what their goals are and why they think their map is good in order to convince the council to ultimately adopt it.
Yeah, one of the things that I can share with you is, one of the things I really like with Bellflower is there's no pockets of, you know, by race or ethnicity or religion or, you know, sexual orientation. I don't, maybe I'm kind of naive, but I don't see that.
You don't have the traditional, you know, across the railroad tracks, one side is overwhelming, one ethnicity, the other is the other ethnicity. You definitely have a much more than traditional mixed neighborhoods.
Right.
But, but you do have one council district, at least at the time that the map was drawn originally. You have one majority Latino seat, one almost majority Latino seat. So there are slight differences in concentration, somewhat than map that Justin showed. There's obviously Latinos, Asian Americans everywhere in the city. But there are parts of the city that are somewhat more densely populated by them.
Okay, all right, very good. I think that's all I had. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Raymond Hamada, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you, Mr. Levitt and Mr. Johnson for being here tonight. This, this topic is very interesting and actually this is my first redistricting as a seated council member. So definitely, this is really important. Both the election code and the staff report makes reference to that, you know, a district shall have nearly equal population. Is there a sort of magic number? Is there a maximum you can, can, or I'm sorry, it's, I mean, there'd have to be like a, well, I mean, is there a max that if, I mean, if you get so far, what if it's off by 540? Is that too high?
So the courts have said that anything where the deviation or the difference in population between the largest and smallest is under 10% of a single district is presumptively constitutional. So 10%, so that would be, it could be five and five, 5% over to 5% under. It could be one district that is 7% over and four that are 1% under. You know, there are some differences that cities have done over the years, but 10%. We just wish we could give you that value right now.
I just want to get an idea. All right, thanks for that. When it comes down to census blocks, have census blocks been divided up between districts before? Or should you keep a block in, in, you know, either district?
We would always recommend keeping census blocks together.
All right, okay. I mean, I too have heard some areas in town. I think that was maybe the first I really heard about North Bellflower. That's, that's my district, District One, of course. But do you take historical data referencing like original subdivisions to factor in? So you don't divide up maybe those considered neighborhoods, you know, I mean, per those tracks? Like for one track area in, at least in my district, is, is the executive track. And so, I mean, does that factor in? Is that utilized when, when you, I mean, do your research and work out divisions and so on?
It certainly can. If we hear people bringing that up, you know, especially if a lot of number of people from the community or members of council are bringing up a specific neighborhood, we're always, you know, we want to get the boundary of that neighborhood. You know, depending, you know, sometimes there's these old boundaries that still exist as historic districts or still exist as defined communities. And so part of this process is understanding whether or not that track still has a cohesive identity and that they feel like they have a community of interest that needs to.
You know, when I was growing up in town here, because I've lived here all my life. And I mean, I recall us kind of utilizing those north of the tracks or those south of the tracks. And that's, that's, I mean, doesn't really apply today anymore, but it, I mean, as what, you know, Councilman because Santiness says, yeah, this, I mean, the population is well-mixed. Yes, there was comments that there's some higher densities of. Yes, there was comments that there's, there's some higher densities of, of Latino areas and so on. So that led me to another question. I mean, when I saw that map. So would you then say there was an area that's, I think there was one divided area, 65 to 75% Latino. Would you then try to keep that all together? Or, and if it's split, again, it all depends on, I probably get that, that area what you want to maybe define as neighborhood and so on, but would, would that be factored in?
Yeah, I'll take that one. One of the things on the voting rights front is the answer is almost always, it depends. As I mentioned here, you actually have two seats that are, if they're not majority, they're close to it. So that, that may be more the goal rather than 65%. So it varies a lot.
Well, again, I'm, I'm sorry, not, I mean, not by the whole district, but by certain areas. I saw certain colored areas. One maybe had that percentage that, that somewhat higher percentage, 65 to 75%. And it was split between two districts. That's, that's, I mean, that's just an example. So when, is that all part of the fact, factoring in on, on trying to divide up? And again, it, 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 it all depends on the numbers of, of the population, of course. So again, it's, it's which goal we're going to make every effort to, you know, fulfill the, the.
And I'll just add that it's also where community testimony in a big way. If people in a very, in that area say, no, our identity goes right through this area. Like these two neighborhoods, even though they're both heavily Latino are very distinct. They don't want to stay together, then we have to take that into consideration.
Yeah. Yeah. The one thing in, in the past election, what I heard was my neighbor across the street is in your district, so you can vote, you know. Yeah, the other one, the other one across the street is in the other district and, and can't. So they, they, they were confused. And again, they had to research the map, of course, and confirm with the city clerk on, on what their voting location was. So actually, when it comes down to the actual local residential streets, I don't know if you, if you got people like at, at the last time saying that, is it gonna, it's gonna mix me up or, 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 you know, or I, I believe I'm, I'm more to that kind of district than the other one. Again. I mean, I wasn't here, so.
That's where the goal that Dr. Levin mentioned of trying to follow major roads and rivers and other things have performed about. We try to follow those because then you don't end up with that. But the number one criterion is always the equal population.
Yeah, yeah.
So sometimes it's not possible to.
Okay, of course, of course. All right. Okay. Thank you very much, Doug. Sorry, I was muted there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hamada. So this is the mayor's, I have, I'm District Number Two representative. And if you look at number two, you can see I probably have the most diverse area. I do have the horse country in my area. I also have the Bellflower High Track, which is probably 500 consistent homes. And then I also have a highly dense area right off the Boulevard, Eucalyptus, Cornuda, which is primarily multi-story apartment building. So in my district, I dare say that I have the most diversity in types of occupancies versus anybody else in the city. And it works. And I'm not here to dismantle it, but I'm just telling you that it seems to be going forward okay. That's more of a comment than a question. So next is, when we did have our last go around, which Mr. Santanés thought it was about seven years ago when we initiated, we had hearings here in City Hall that required that we have many different languages represented. Are we going to do that again?
Doug, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, we had interpreters here in Bellflower City Hall.
It will be based upon request. It, it was also a part of this public hearing tonight. And it was noted on the agenda as well as on the public notice that was published on the website. And we did not get any requests for this evening, but it will be based upon request.
Okay, but at this point, we had, tonight's meeting was not any request required of foreign language participation?
Correct.
Okay. One of the things that we, I don't know if it was accidental or purposeful, but we tried to have as many of the districts touch Bellflower Boulevard. So one council person didn't have total control of that. Is that something to consider again in the future? Or what had happened there was a chance. But you can see one of the things we are developing is Bellflower Boulevard, and we didn't have the burden fall on one district. Can you comment on that, please?
Sure. This is one of the challenges the new law sets up. Because before you had a lot of discretion to identify neighborhoods and communities of interest, and then how are they best served? Now, as, as long as that area isn't considered a neighborhood, then you have the, the discretion to decide, is it better served by keeping it in one seat or another? So you could follow the same pattern. The only challenge, the, well, the challenge the new law sets up is if it is determined that there's a given neighborhood that's on both sides of Bellflower Boulevard, then you run into difficulties doing that. But as long as, as I somewhat have the outsider's impression, Bellflower is a big major road. There are kind of neighborhoods on either side of it, then you could continue to follow that process.
Okay. That's been useful to us so that, like again, we wanted as much input as possible from as many potential users of the Boulevard. So that concludes our question. So at this point, I will look for a motion to open the public hearing.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Sunny Santanés, supported by Councilman Victor Sanchez. Without objection, that'll be the order. So Madam City Clerk, is there anyone that would like to give testimony this evening on this subject?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing any raised hands at this time.
Thank you very much.
Sir Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right. So we have motion by Councilmember Sunny Santanés, supported by Councilmember Raymond Y. Hamada to close the public hearing. Without objection, that'll be the order. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure?
Mayor, I go ahead and recommend, recommend author, have the city manager authorized to execute agreement number two, is agreement file number 227 and the amendment of number two to the agreement file number 276.1 and the forms approved by the city attorney.
That'll be your motion?
Oh, hang on. I'm reading the wrong one.
Mr. Mayor, I do see a raised, a raised hand. It's a bit late.
All right. So hold that thought, Ray. We're going to have a
Okay.
public participation here. Please let that member enter the meeting.
That was my strategy.
Mr. City Attorney, do we need to reopen the public hearing?
That would be the wise thing to do, yes.
Okay, make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All right. So the motion by member, Councilmember Sunny Santanés to open the public hearing, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada to support that. Without objection, that'll be the order. We're ready for the testimony.
Clock on the screen, if you could do that for us, Jennifer?
Oh, sorry.
One moment.
Can I ask my question or?
Yeah, go right ahead, sir.
Oh, so I just wanted to know what's the actual reason to redistrict the city? So what's like the motion behind it?
It's required by law every 10 years.
Oh, it's, oh, okay. So does that change like everything in this city or like what specifically changes?
I think you heard a presentation on that. It depends on the demographic information, the block by block demographic information we received from the state in September. And it'll have to do on the movement of the neighborhoods. And then the demographer will consider that information and start helping us draw maps on that. Have any other questions, sir?
No, it's, it's kind of hard for me to understand. Does, does that mean like funds go to different districts or is it just to map the city?
It's to map the city to make it consistent with our new census data that we expect to hear sometime in August or September to see how the city's made up now, 10 years.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
This for city council representation.
Okay. Thank you.
Did the person identify themselves, Madam City Clerk? Do you need that?
I have the name Omar. Would you like to include your last name into the record?
Omar Gonzalez. Thank you.
Myra, is anyone else out there would like to give testimony?
I don't see anyone else, Mayor.
All right. So I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Sir Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
So the motion is made by Councilmember Victor, by Sunny Santanés, supported by Councilmember Raymond Hamada. Without objection, there be the order. Now we're looking for a motion to proceed.
I don't think it has to be a motion. I think just this, this goes on to the next meeting. This is one of.
All right. So we're supporting what's been done this evening. We'll move on to the next meeting. Without objection, that'll be the order. How, any further discussion? None. It says take the roll call. So Madam City Clerk, let's take the roll call. They're all in agreement to move on to the next measure of this.
I, I don't have a motion or a second.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we.
It's just receive and file public testimony.
I'll second, I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Great. So Mayor Protem Ray Dutton made the motion to receive and file the information submitted this evening. And that was supported, of course, by Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Please poll the council.
Councilmember Santanés?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. All right. Now we'll go back to our agenda. After having done nine A, we're going to move back down to item seven, City Council announcements. And I'll start with the Bellflower Parks and Recreation Department presents Bellflower's Night at the Drive-In. The movie is Toy Story Four, and it's going to be shown on Friday, May 7th. That's this coming Saturday at 8:00 PM. Is that right? Friday, May 7th, and at Sims Park. Registration is limited, so be sure to register soon as you can at AMP, A-M-P dot activecommunities dot com slash Bellflower Recreation for more information. It may be easier to just simply call 562-804-1424, extension 2261. I want to thank the county supervisor, Janice Hahn, for her sponsorship of this event. Mayor Protem Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Bellflower staff is working with our supervisor, Janice Hahn's office and LA County Public Health to use Sims Park as a vaccination site on Thursdays beginning April 15th through the end of May. Everyone 18 and older are eligible to receive the free Moderna COVID-19 vaccines. Appointments are required and can be made at myturn california.gov. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor. The award-winning program, LEAD program, which stands for Leadership Experience and Development, is running, is returning this summer and will run for 10 weeks. The application deadline for the summer program is Friday, May 7th. And the selected applicants will be interviewed virtually the week of May 17th. LEAD volunteers will begin their job training the week of June 1st. For more information, they can visit our, for more information on the program and to apply, they can visit online at www.bellflower.org. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Sunny Santanés.
Thank you, Mayor. For those of you who joined us at the beginning of this meeting, you're aware that the 2021 redistricting process has begun. Redistricting occurs every 10 years following the release of the census results. It's an opportunity to redraw district lines based on population changes indicated in the census at the state, county, and city levels. Residents can submit maps of their own and get involved in the process. For more information, you can visit our redistricting website at www.drawbellflower.org or email to redistricting@bellflower.org. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Santanés. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, we want to remind all businesses that they should have received the official notices from the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration regarding the new sales tax of 10.25% in Bellflower, which took effect April 1, 2021. Look, a please note, with voter approval in the November 2020 election, the new sales tax and use tax in Bellflower was mandated. Please apply this new sales tax rate to all taxable sales and transactions from April 1, 2021. If you have any questions, please refer to the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration website at www.cdtfa.ca.gov. All right. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. So we're making a presentation now, this Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the proclamation reads as so, "Whereas children are vital to our state's future success, prosperity, and quality of life, as well as being our most vulnerable assets, and whereas all children deserve to have the safe, stable, and nurturing homes and communities that need to be fostered their healthy growth and development, and whereas child abuse and neglect is a community responsibility affecting the current and future quality of life of a community, and whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of partnerships created among citizens, human service agencies, schools, faith communities, healthcare providers, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, now therefore I, Dan Coops, the mayor of the city of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families that thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities we live." This proclamation is signed by myself, Mayor Dan Coops, Mayor Protem Rayman Dutton, Councilmember Raymond Y. Hamada, Councilmember Victor A. Sanchez, and Councilmember Sunny R. Santanés. And I believe we have a representative from the Ninos Latinos and Didos Bellflower Organization online to accept this award. Are you online, sir?
Yes.
Oh, the lady? Okay. So it's a great, I'm going to hold this up. If you're on television or on Zoom, you can see what we've got here. And if, we'll make sure the city of Bellflower gets this to you. But on behalf of the city of Bellflower, we're making you this presentation, and would you like to give a response?
Yes. How are you, number one?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Hello, we're listening. Have you anything you'd like to say in behalf of those that you're protecting?
Yes, my name is Guri Millian. I'm one of the owner and program director and also founder of Ninos Latinos and Didos. We've been in this city for more than 20 years.
We appreciate your good work. And so you've been in business 20 years trying to help to protect the children of our community. Is that correct?
Yes, in Bellflower 20 years, but since the 1992, I'm in this foundation.
Is there anything else you'd like to offer?
We recruit families. It doesn't have to be Latino precisely. It could be any, anybody from any nation, any ethnic group to place the children in their home. And we provide them with medical attention, psychology attention, and all the need for these childrens.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you for the work you do in Bellflower. We appreciate it very much. And we're glad to be able to have you as a recipient of our child abuse. And we're glad to be able to have you as a recipient of our Child Abuse Prevention Month certificate. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, thank you.
All right, moving on to nine B, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action, conduct a public hearing to receive comments on the fiscal year 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan and adopt Resolution 21-28, 28, a resolution approving the fiscal year 21-22 Annual Action Plan, authorizing the city manager to submit the AAP to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, and authorizing the city manager to take all actions necessary to implement the programs identified in the AAP. And I believe Mr. Del Longa has staff report for you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, to interrupt. I believe we skipped over public comments.
Okay, I apologize. So would you let in any members of the public that would like to give testimony this evening?
I have a raised hand for Brian Medina of Tree People. If you could give me a moment to share my screen and get the timer up, you may go ahead. Okay, you may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Brian Medina, and I'm a community organizer of Tree People. We're an LA-based environmental nonprofit working in Southeast LA with community members to help build local climate justice and resiliency. And as we're entering into another drought, water is especially critical for our communities here in region. And so we're working on a current, on a state-funded project called Water Talks, which is really aimed at getting feedback from community members across the county regarding any water needs or concerns they may have. And we really want to get as much feedback from folks in Bellflower and the surrounding communities as well. So I'd like to invite you and the Bellflower community to take our 10-minute water survey by this Friday, April 30th. And you can help guide how millions of Prop 1 and Measure W dollars go, go towards future water projects in the area. And some questions can cover topics such as water quality, safety, mosquito and vector control, and stormwater runoff major streets. And all participants who participate will be entered into a raffle for a $100 gift card. So to go to the survey, all you need to go to is tinyurl.com/waterla or for Spanish, tinyurl.com/iyla to participate. And if you have any questions, please feel free to email me at bmedina@treepeople.org or call me at 562-584-1410 if you have any questions. And I can also share bilingual flowers with much more details. And I thank you so much for your time, and I hope you can help participate in the future water out here in LA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Medina, for your testimony. Madam City Clerk, anyone else in, like to participate in the public hearing?
Mayor, I'll give the public a moment to utilize the future. I'm not seeing any further raised hands at this time, Mayor.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Stewart, you read the item nine B, and you have someone who's going to give that presentation?
Travis Seis will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Sorry, had some technical difficulty there. But good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. As required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, also known as HUD, the city is conducting a public hearing for the fiscal year 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan. Sorry, one second, having a difficulty with my PowerPoints. Madam City Clerk, do you mind? I'm sharing my screen. It looks like it's actually frozen. Okay, thank you. There we go. Did everyone see it?
We cannot see it.
Okay. All right, I think that might be better.
Yes.
Yeah, could you make it a little smaller?
Alrighty, so I'm going to give a brief overview of the action plan here. So it's a one-year plan which outlines the city's use of its Community Development Block Grant Funds, also known as CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds, also known as HOME. So more specifically, the action plan describes the anticipated goals and activities for the upcoming program year and must be submitted to HUD by May 15th in order to apply for and receive funds for the upcoming fiscal year. So every five years, the city must submit a consolidated plan to HUD, which is a five-year plan for the use of CDBG and HOME funds. And the consolidated plan is then carried out through annual action plans. So this is actually the second year of the consolidated plan, so this would be the second action plan. So CDBG funds, they must be used for activities that benefit low-income residents or for promoting economic development and eliminating blight. The CDBG program can fund activities such as community and public facilities, infrastructure improvements, economic developments, public services, and business assistance. No more than 20% of the allocation can be spent on administration, and no more than 15% can be spent on public service activities. So this next fiscal year, the city will receive approximately $925,000 in CDBG funds. The city expects to receive approximately $5,500 in program income and anticipates approximately $303,000 in carryover funds, with the total estimated funding at 1.23 million. On this next slide, the proposed CDBG budget and activities for this next fiscal year are depicted. So we have CDBG funds that can be used to support public service agencies that provide vital services in the community. So staff received and approved three applications from the Fair Housing Foundation, Kingdom Causes Bellflower's Good Soils Program, and the Bellflower Volunteer Center. So first off, staff recommends funding the Fair Housing Foundation at $18,000. They provide fair housing services to residents to prevent discrimination. Their services include but are not limited to referrals, investigations, case management, litigation, and resolving landlord-tenant disputes. As a CDBG grantee, the city has a responsibility to affirmatively further fair housing. Therefore, HUD requires some sort of fair housing service, and the Fair Housing Foundation services satisfy this requirement. So next, staff recommends funding Kingdom Causes Bellflower's Good Soils Program at $25,000. Kingdom Causes, they offer employment opportunities through their Good Soils Industries program. And this program assists in hiring residents that are underemployed and unemployed. And they also provide on-the-job training, certification programs, and job acquisition skills for those who may have a criminal record or are at risk of being homeless. To Kingdom Causes, they did request $36,700 in their application. However, due to the 15% public service cap, staff is recommending funding them at $25,000. Next, the city has budgeted approximately $114,000 of CDBG for the Volunteer Center. The Volunteer Center recruits, trains, supervises, and recognizes individuals who volunteer their time to serve the low and moderate income residents of Bellflower. The Volunteer Center is also a part of that 15% public service cap and is primarily funded with CDBG. So all three public service agencies, they participated in the program in prior years and met their goals without any issues. Next, CDBG partly funds code enforcement activities that address blight and CDBG eligible areas. The city has budgeted approximately $283,000 to continue these activities. Next, the city continues to also budget its debt service payments for its Section 108 loan that was used for several capital improvements in the town center area. This next fiscal year, that payment is about $507,000, and this was a 20-year, $7 million loan taken out in 2004. This loan will be paid off the end of this five-year consolidated planning period, which is August 2024. So next, as previously mentioned, up to 20% of CDBG funds can be used for administration of the program. Staff has budgeted about $167,000 for staff and consultant costs next fiscal year. Lastly, there is approximately $120,000 being carried over from the prior year's Business Assistance Program. Staff is recommending rolling this funding into a new small business startup loan program for next fiscal year, which would be targeted towards the small businesses at the Orchard at Bellflower Center project. So the draft guidelines for this program are attached to the staff report for the city council's consideration. And this would essentially be a pilot program that we could possibly continue and expand if there is additional CDBG funding available in the future. So next are HOME funds. So they are meant to retain and increase the affordable housing stock for renters and owners in the city, and they must serve low-income households. Eligible uses of these funds include homeowner rehabilitation, the development of affordable housing, property acquisition for the development of affordable housing, and homebuyer activities. The maximum of 10% of the home allocation can be used for program administration, and at least 15% of the allocation must be set aside for a community housing development organization, also known as a CHODO, and this is for an affordable housing project. So in fiscal year 2021-2022, the city will receive approximately $360,000 in HOME funds. The city anticipates approximately 1.4 million in carryover. And then program income, it varies annually based on loan principal, interest, and equity sharing payments returned to the city during the fiscal year. So staff is using a nominal amount of $1,000. The program income that the city receives is reinvested back into the HOME program. But the total estimated HOME funding for next fiscal year is about $1.8 million. This next slide has the proposed HOME budget for next fiscal year. Staff has budgeted $250,000 for the HOME Improvement Program, which provides loans and grants to qualified low-income homeowners who wish to make qualifying improvements to their home or repair health and safety issues. Next, approximately $1.5 million is set aside for one or more CHODO projects. This amount includes a $1.2 million carryover from the CHODO line item last year, and a CHODO must be a nonprofit agency that will develop, own, or sponsor an affordable housing project. And staff is looking at using these funds for a potential permanent supportive housing project in the city. And lastly, staff has budgeted about $36,000 for staff and consultant costs. So on March 25th, a notice of a 30-day public comment period in this public hearing was published in the Wave newspaper, and the draft action plan was made available for public review and comments from March 25th through today, April 26th. Staff received one comment from Ms. Chrissy Berkey earlier today noting that Kingdom Causes Bellflower is their full legal name. And in the action plan documents, they are referenced as Kingdom Causes. So staff will make this correction in the action plan document to ensure their legal name is used to avoid any possible confusion with organizations also naming Kingdom Causes, which Ms. Berkey noted. So with that, our recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing, take testimonial and documentary evidence. And after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number 21-28, or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. So that completes the presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Travis. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, you got any questions on what was presented?
Oh, Mayor, I do not have any questions at this time.
All right, now I'm going to go to our resident accountant, who always asks questions, Councilmember Sunny San Yanez.
Mr. Mayor, what if I say I don't have questions? Will you be shocked?
No, I know you're going to have questions because just like last year, you're going to ask, why didn't we spend all the money? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Seis, and thank you and Mr. Del Longa for making this report a very comprehensive one. I really admire the way you allocated the money. As you mentioned, the money is, it's limited, but I think you did a best effort to, to take care of different areas of the city. Having said that, my first question is, the carryover funds, is there a time limit for both CDBG and HOME carryover?
So there's not an exact timeline. There used to be, but they waived that a while back. So we do have a timeline, though, for the CHODO project. I think I might have mentioned this actually last year when we were going through this, but that timeline for our next CHODO project is September 2025. So that's when we have to spend a portion of the, this CHODO line item. So like I said earlier, 15% of the annual HOME allocation has to be allocated toward the CHODO projects. Typically, we allocate a little bit more than that 15%, and we've been building that up over time.
Okay, all right, that will give it a lot of flexibility then. All right. Speaking of CHODOs, how many CHODOs are allowed to operate in the city?
So we can have as many CHODOs operating.
Right now, how many are operating in the city right now?
So there's a few that had CHODO, that CHODO qualification recently in the past, but if, once we have a new CHODO project, it's something we have to qualify them annually.
Okay, okay. And do you have, do you have a number right now? If we, if we say, if we make this available, how many could qualify to apply? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, there's, there are a couple that we know of. I know Partnership Housing, they work with Habitat for Humanity to do the Ramona Street Project. So we have them, and then also there's Hope, so that was the homeownership for personal empowerment. They were actually a previous CHODO. But I believe they're based in Long Beach, but they're, they also have had the CHODO qualification in Bellflower as well.
Oh, I see, okay. And in the, in the project that you have here for, uh, the Orchard, you mentioned that you're allocating $120,000 for that project?
Right.
Right. Okay, and then two eligible businesses? Up to two, right?
Uh, two is just the, the goal, essentially. So that's where, in the action plan, where you have to set a goal. So we could potentially fund three, but two with up to $50,000. So we would have $20,000 remaining. So we could also assist a third business.
Okay, so basically you can have, I'm, I'm kind of curious as to what they're going to do with the extra $20,000.
So it's going to be based on the businesses and the amount of assistance they need. So just speaking with a few of them, we thought $50,000 would be a reasonable amount of assistance to provide them with the startup capital, to get up and running in the Orchard, just for equipment purchases and just for that working capital that they need to get moving. So this is why we wanted to target this towards that project, just to give them that momentum and that assistance to get them up and running quickly.
So assuming that, from what I know, at the groundbreaking ceremony, I think there could be potentially up to seven businesses in that, in the Orchard? Because we met, we met three of them, I think, at the time. And so I'm kind of curious, what would be the selection criteria if you have, let's say, more than three applicants? How would you select them?
So that's something that we would look at based on their need too. So really the need for the funding. So we could look at financials and look at their other sources of funding. And if, you know, they, they truly need, say, the full $50,000 in order to open up and say, we have another business who, they have some funding sources to, you know, start them up quicker. And that's part of the criteria we would look at. But this is really open for discussion too. This is something that we thought would be a good use for this carryover funds. But it's something that, you know, that the council can discuss tonight and also decide on. If there's additional criteria that you'd like included in the program guidelines, that's something that we could include.
Okay, all right, that's good. Thank you. And then on the, the single-family home housing rehabilitation program, you allocated $250,000 for that, and you mentioned about target is four households. So how, what's the maximum amount that each household can qualify for?
So the maximum amount is $50,000, and that goal, we usually set just a lower goal because the qualification process can be pretty extensive. So we have to qualify them based on income. So we have to request income documentation and conduct that income qualification then. After they initially meet that requirement, then we have to go out and take a look at the site because the project also, the home has to be under a certain value. So that value currently right now is $532,000. So we actually did a market study this, this year, and we're going to get that increased slightly. So that's going to be increased a little bit, but we have to make sure that the after-rehab value of the home is under that value. And then after that, we would go through the necessary asbestos and lead testing if the house was built prior to 1978. So it can be extensive, so that's why we conservatively usually estimate about four projects. But the maximum deferred loan amount is $50,000.
Yeah, okay. And I noticed that also in your housing survey, I think that the span of about three months or four, five months, something like that? I mean, the home prices had increased significantly.
Yes, yes, they have. Yes, yes, they have. That's why we do that annually too. Cause HUD, they have like a regional area median, median value. And that includes everywhere from Los Angeles County, Long Beach, I mean Glendale. It's kind of like a metropolitan regional area. So their regional area is at about, I think, 500,000. And then we did our own study and that's at about 500 and I believe it's 37 or 39,000 now in Bellflower. So that's why we do that annually and we submit it with the action plan. So we can get that value increase so we could hopefully qualify more households in the city.
In, in the last cycle, do you remember how many households were assisted?
Last, the five year cycle. So in the five year cycle for 2015 to 2020, we had about 21 households that were assisted. And then currently right now, I can say that we recently had three mobile home grant projects completed this year. And then we're working on one deferred loan project, which is a single family home. And then one fix-it grant, which is a single family home, and then four other mobile home grants. So that's what we're currently working on right now.
Yeah, and, and thank you for reminding, reminding us about the mobile homes. And I'm really glad that we're able to assist a few of them. They really need those, those repairs in their mobile homes. So again, I thank you so much for your presentation and thank you so much for your report. That completes my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. San Yanez. Mr. Hamada, Councilman Raymond Hamada, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you Travis again for the thorough report. And as mentioned, there's, I mean, there's always limited funding. Travis, you mentioned the carryover amount from last year. What was that total again?
Is this for home or for CDBG?
I'm sorry, for the, I look at CDBG.
Yeah, so CDBG carryover, I'll go back to that slide.
Oh, yeah, I saw it. Yeah, 300, 300 something, that's right.
Yeah, 303 approximately.
Oh, okay, all right. What, what categories did that come from? So obviously we didn't spend as much in certain categories.
Right, so we have about 120,000, that was from the business assistance.
Yeah.
And then we have 55,000 and that was from the CDBG admin carryover. And the reason for that was because we also have the CDBG CV funds. So we were able to use 20% of that too for staff time to administer the rental assistance program, the rental and mortgage assistance program. So we were able to use that different funding source. So that's why there's some CDBG admin carryover. And then the remainder of that was from code enforcement.
All right. I mean, obviously this takes careful planning and again, we have to anticipate, I mean, what amounts we're gonna get next year and then what, I mean, what categories and then we have to hear requests and so on. So obviously we need to sense the big picture on this. In the, in the past, have we ever during the year reconsidered reallocating certain amounts as we see that we're going to probably have some savings? And then move it to other categories?
Yeah, since, since I've been here, we actually did that. We reprogrammed some of the funding in the past for a project towards another project. So we had the $300,000 a few years back, which was reallocated to the Small Business Assistance Program. So that was actually when COVID first, first really hit. And we were able to provide those Small Business Assistance Program grants using CDBG funds that we reallocated during the program year. So when we do that, we just take an amendments, an action plan amendment to the city council.
Yes, all right. So that has possibilities down the road. You know, actually I forgot, I, I did want to start, my comment was that I, I, I am on the board of directors of Kingdom Causes Bellflower. And again, I'm a volunteer and as I mentioned in, in the past years, again, I'm, I'm not paid, so you know, I will be able to participate in, in such requests. So I did, you know, obviously see that they are a potential, you know, look at recipients, so. The, the section eight 10, I'm sorry, the section 108 loan repayment. Is that a, has that been a fixed annual amount, that 500 plus? Or is, is that, again, you know, principal and, and interest combined?
Right, that's principal and interest, so it's amortized over 20 years, so the payment slightly increase each year.
Have increased over the years, okay. So, so you said that it'll sometime in August of 2024, that'll be the final payment. So, so we anticipate next year to be roughly the same amount or more. And then a, and then 23, 24 would be the final, final. And that would zero out at least the potential, you know, potentially, unless we do something else, of course. So is that the case?
Right, yeah, so that, each year we make these payments and it's out of our CDBG allocation amount. So those are gonna slightly increase and then the final payment is August 2024. So that's actually the fifth year of the consolidated plan because that is fiscal year 2024, 2025. So that following year, fiscal year 2025, 2026, we no longer will have that obligation. So we'll have, you know, approximately half a million dollars more in CDBG available.
Okay, during that year, 25, 26, okay.
Right, depending on our future allocation.
Sure, sure, of course.
Yeah, and, and council member at that point in time, council could do another section, section 108 loan.
Yeah, of course.
Typically those amounts are, I believe, Travis may correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, it's often five times your annual allocation in the amount of loan that you can get to do larger projects sooner by taking out a section 108 loan.
Yeah, that's right. All right, I think one, one last question. The, the fair housing services, that's under what kind of administration versus public service?
That's correct.
All right, I just want to be sure, I, when you had mentioned the requests and then it, I, I mean, I do see the single asterisk versus the double asterisk, so I just wanted to be sure again. I think I asked that last year. And again, I, I'm, I'm glad to see that mobile home parks are, are getting some of the money. So definitely, year after year, we see a lot more that are in dire need of repair. And so hopefully, there's some money continued that way. So again, I want to thank staff for, you know, again, making their best effort on, on this and, you know, dividing up as fairly as possible. I know we couldn't fulfill all the initial requests, but again, possibly during the year then, we may be able to revisit. So I just wanted to hear that. All right, okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Councilmember Victor Sanchez, questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Travis Staff, thank you very much for the, the presentation, very informative, very thorough. Just a couple of questions here, trying to learn a little bit more. This is my first time reviewing this annual plan. The Fair Housing Services, is that, is that a requirement that's, that's, we contribute to that or how does that work out?
Yeah, so each year, they still have to apply for the funding, but we do have to have some sort of fair housing service. And as I mentioned in the, during the presentation, so we have an obligation as a CDBG grantee to affirmatively further fair housing and we do that by providing fair housing services. So we've actually been contracting with the Fair Housing Foundation for quite some time. For, I believe, at least around 20 years or so. But they've been providing services to our Bellflower residents for quite some time. But we've actually referred quite a few residents that have been inquiring about fair housing law and the eviction moratorium and rent increases to the Fair Housing Foundation. And from what we've heard, they've been able to assist in those matters.
Okay, in the, this last cycle, I know you have a goal for this next 160 households to be benefited or assisted. What, what was the benefit in this last cycle?
Sure, so last fiscal year was actually 154 residents were able to get assistance through the Fair Housing Foundation. So they provide an annual report to us and, yeah, they indicated that in total, there's 154 Bellflower residents that received direct assistance with counseling services.
Very good, thank you, sir. Thank you for providing that information. I didn't see that on here. I don't know if I missed this, I apologize. Oh, that's good, that's good to know. I did have another question related to, in, in the past, if my memory serves me, I think we used to have a homeownership assistance program or anything like that. I think we, we, we did away with that. I don't see that in here, right?
That's correct.
Okay, and that was just, was that a, is that a, was that a requirement to get rid of or was that something that we weren't effective in?
So it wasn't a requirement to get rid of, it was something that we looked at because the high housing costs. And then also that the low income limits. So the applicants have to be considered low income, but then also have to qualify to buy a home. And we weren't able to get anyone to qualify. I mean, we could get them to qualify based on income, but they couldn't qualify to buy a home. So it was really difficult because we, we didn't have anyone that was able to successfully get a, one of the deferred loans for, for three years. So it was, I mean, we spent a lot of time on it too. We got a lot of inquiries, but it was just really hard to get anyone to qualify.
Well, that makes sense, thank you. I mean, with the housing market going the way it is, it's probably more difficult now too. It sounds like you're probably having the same issue then with, I think Councilmember Hamada alluded to it, which was the affordable, or Sunny Nez, Councilmember Nez, about the affordable housing to improve and conserve existing affordable housing. It sounds like you said they have to be, it has to stay under 500,000 or something around that, is it?
So yeah, that's the home value. So it's about, it's gonna be about 537,000 because we submit this action plan to HUD and that market study is an attachment and then HUD would review that and hopefully approve it. And in previous years, they have. So basically, the home after rehab has to be under that value. So we have seen more success with that program though than the home, the home buyer assistance program. So like I said, in 20 through 2015 to 2020, we were able to assist about 21 households with home improvements.
Very good. And then I do want to echo the comments of my colleagues with regards to the mobile homes. I do have a lot of mobile homes and I did canvas those really fairly. And I think that it's good that, that we're providing some rental assistance in that area. This, this, this action or this annual action plan doesn't incorporate policies or anything of that sort, right? This is just more the budgeting, is, is the policy directed in a different time or?
No, so this is more for the CDBG and home program funds. So this is just, we're carrying out an action plan and it's a part of our five year consolidated plan. So that's really more about the goals and activities and then the, the funding. So that's kind of our, our plan moving forward. So it's not so much about, you know, rental policy or anything like that, but it's more just programming the, the funds and how we're gonna spend them.
Got it, thank you Travis. I appreciate that, I appreciate that. That answered my question then. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments and questions at this time, thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez, how many mobile home parks do you believe there's in Bellflower?
I don't know, I'd say what, 12 maybe?
51.
51? Wow.
Think about all those on Lakewood Boulevard and those on Alondra.
Well, I was thinking of, yeah, there's the ones in Artesia and then the ones on Lakewood Boulevard.
Somerset.
Oh, that's right, there's one, one Somerset.
I thought you'd find that figure amazing.
Yeah, I didn't know that. It's a good fun fact. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How many used car dealers you think we have?
I don't know, you telling me 32?
49, so. Yeah. No, I think there's just about as many used car dealers as there are mobile home parks. Yeah, little fun fact. So we've completed our questions, I believe, unless anybody's developed another question of Travis. We can now open, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anybody wanna make that motion?
Yes, so moved, Ray Hamada. Oh, I'll second that.
All right, I got Mr. Hamada's motion support.
That was, I believe, Mr. Dutton.
Mr. Dutton, okay. All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Hamada supported by Mr. Dutton. Without objection, that'll be the order. Madam City Clerk, have we anybody that would like to give testimony on this item?
Mayor, I have a raised hand for Jason Barnett. Mr. Barnett, if I can get the timer up on the screen, you may begin. Give me one moment, please. Okay. It is ready.
All right, we ready?
All right, Mr. Barnett, you're on.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. We really appreciate you being part with us as we help our citizens in Bellflower. You know, this year we've doubled down and actually added another case manager and to help speed up the process with helping our homeless neighbors and low income individuals find full-time employment. And that was part of the reason why we were asking for a little more money, but we really appreciate what you guys always help us out with. You guys are a big part of what we do and we just really appreciate it. Our last, right now we have six individuals that are ready for full-time employment, so we'll be flipping over here in real soon. And we just appreciate what you guys do for us in the community. There's so many different areas that you guys help out the community and I'm just really proud to be part of this. And just thank you so much for your time and we look forward to continuing our partnership with you guys.
Thank you, Jason. Madam City Clerk, anybody else want to give testimony?
Mayor, I see no further raised hands.
All right, thank you for that. Any other discussion you'd like to have about this item or are you ready for a motion? Oh, first of all, let's close the public hearing. Anybody like to have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, so Mr. Dutton made the motion to close the public hearing, supported by Mr. Hamada. Without objection, that'll be the order. Now let's go forward with the possible motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
I'm glad you're on the line, Mr. Dutton, I need to.
Yeah.
I'm glad your phone's working tonight.
Yeah. Hey, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 21-28.
I'll second that.
All right, so the motion by Mr. Dutton, seconded by Councilmember Victor Sanchez, please poll the council.
Councilmember Santanas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Dutton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. Moving on to items, resolutions for consideration, none. Consideration 11, none. We're going to move right over to the consent calendar, 12A to 12K. Does anyone have any conflicts or any evenings closed session items, any?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself from item 12C. Being them being customers.
All right, so noted. Anybody else have a conflict or like to poll an item for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, may I request that we pull, just for, again, questions and comments, 12D and 12I?
All right, duly noted, 12D like David and 12I like Igloo.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything like to poll for discussion separately?
Mr. Mayor, item C, is that, has that been pulled yet?
Not yet. Well, that's one Mr. Dutton can't participate in, but you can certainly pull it for discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to pull that item, Mr. Yeah, I'd like to pull that item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Sonny, you want to pull? You're the only one out there.
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull item uh items E, twelve, twelve B, and twelve H.
All right, so that would be Mr. Santanis.
Yeah, and twelve B is just for a comment.
All right. Let's start with twelve C. That would be Victor. We'll go in alphabetical order best we can. Victor, what do you? How would you like to discuss that?
Mayor Protem, uh, Dutton is recused on twelve C, so I will put him in the waiting room.
All right, so he's out for now, twelve C. Mr. Dutton, you can sit on the corner and Victor can bring forward his twelve C questions or comments.
Thank you. Am I good to go, Mayor?
You're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, yes, uh, twelve C, I just kind of want to um ask staff for clarification as to the formula and how we came about with the the specific numbers. And then how are we comparing it to other uh contracts that we have renewal fees on?
Mr. Mayor, if you like, this is Joel. I can respond to that.
Go right ahead, Mr. Hawkman.
Uh, yes, Mr. Sanchez, as you recall, we're kind of on our, I think, third version of this thing. Uh, originally, we talked about a fee associated with the towing fee the city has, a hundred and forty-five dollars times the number of toes in a given a year times the fifteen percent that was kicked around. And then in a subsequent uh version, there was interest in having the fee be the same for both of the two companies. And so loosely an average of those two numbers that we had in phase one, we applied an average for each of them in phase two, and that's what you have before you. That eight thousand dollars uh currently is a rough average between what was the fees associated in the first round.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkman. No, I understand how the the math came about. I uh, my question is, what's our policy and what's our, how are we being consistent here? Because I this this topic came about when we were doing the CRNR renewal contract. Um, if I'm mis- if I'm not mistaken, our CRNR contract is is um it's a lot different and we're charging a twenty thousand dollar renewal fee with that contract. And then here it's uh the math, if I do the math based off of the number of cars times one forty-five, you're looking at about ninety-something thousand dollars. And we're we're asking a a renewal fee of almost sixteen thousand dollars, almost the same as CRNR. So I just want to know where, how are we being consistent here?
Right. Well, I don't think it's quite an apples and apples comparison. I would agree with that. The figure of eight thousand is applied over the course of a three-year agreement, so it's two thousand and something per year uh per company. So it is maybe a smaller amount than you were thinking, but in terms of how it compares in calculation to the other agreement, yeah, that would be different.
Right, and I believe the CRNR contract is also a three-year contract, if I'm not mistaken. I I'm just, I'm wanting to make sure that we're consistent. That that's all. Just um I don't I don't know how my colleagues feel about this, but to me, it's a little inconsistent with our math.
Council Councilmember Sanchez, this is Len. Can I chime in real quick?
Of course.
So the 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 renewal fee uh that CRNR presented was just exactly that. As as part of their offer of of uh uh doing an extension, uh, they threw that in there as one of the items that they would be willing to give up. There was no formula applied to it. It's not based on customer accounts. There there's no background to it other than it was simply a number that they presented to us as part of their proposal.
Understood. Okay, so that was it was a was it the first time that that happened?
With with the trash contract? No, that was not the first time.
Okay, okay. Um, are we? So I'm trying to understand it. I'm just uh, are we gonna charge CRNR a fifteen percent renewal fee in the next contract or whoever, whatever trash company we end up going with? Is that is that the precedent that we're gonna set here?
So with with the trash RFP, when it when it goes out to bid, the the proposers will typically put together a offer package. Um, ten years ago or twelve years ago, it was all about replacing their fleets, uh, shifting away from diesel and gas over to CNG vehicles. So that was a a big part of the presentations we received last time we went out to RFP on it. So i- i- it's kind of just dictated by by what's going on in the market and and how the proposer tries to um uh present uh what they think would be a a best type of contract. There's not a fixed rate to it. Um, what what you may be getting confused with might be the franchise fee, uh, which is uh completely separate from that that twenty thousand dollar uh proposal that they uh they submitted to us. Um, but the franchise fee is based on the uh cost the city recuperates, the the cost the city spends annually um on the the contract, the enforcement, the monitoring of it, the everything that kind of comes with it. Uh, that's the fee that we applied to the the uh the amended agreement in order for us to recoup our cost.
Mr. Sanchez, as a long answer, we don't have a stated policy on the renewal regarding a franchise fee or a renewal fee.
Thank you, Joe. I think that's that's the answer I'm looking for. Um, my understanding then would be, I think, I don't, there was I I might be mistaken. I don't have that contract in front of me, but I think it was twenty thousand dollars was what the renewal fee was. It wasn't the franchise fee. I think that was separate. Um, okay, I'm just, I'm just curious. I'm just making sure that we're being consistent here. Um, that completes my questions and comments at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. All right, moving on to Mr. Hamada, twelve D like David.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
What's that, Mr. Sunny?
Can I make a comment about twelve C?
Sure.
Okay, well, uh, I was the one, you recall, I was the one who brought this up. And I'm not, I wasn't trying to compare apples to apples between um uh CRNR and um and the towing services. What I what caught me attention was there was a cost, there is a cost to the city for renewing a contract. And you can imagine now how much time is tabbed spent on this contract renewal for towing service. So I what's I brought it up there. So there is a, there's a cost that we get, that we we don't recover, that we haven't recovered yet. And I and uh Mr. Hawkman rightfully said that there's no comparison of apples to apples between these contracts versus um CRNR. The contract is a contract. Whether it's a ten million contract or one thousand contract, in terms of the process of redoing the contract, they're the same. Okay, so we cannot equate a CRNR contract renewal that's in millions of dollars versus this contract that is not into that amount. But this, the amount of time and effort to me is almost equal in terms of writing the contract and reviewing the contract. So I brought it up because I'm trying to uh get some kind of additional revenue for the city. And the fifteen percent, if I recall correctly, was a suggestion in terms of how do we quantify a contract renewal for this amount of contract. So there was no specific formula nor a base, a a formula uh to come up with other than a reasonable amount. And I think the city attorney suggested that amount, and I thought, well, that's reasonable amount. And so the mathematics, it was just came, it just came about that it was about eight thousand dollars per contractor. And to to basically recoup that money, and I said it very clearly, I don't want the towing service companies to eat this cost. I was very clear about that. I want to make sure that those users pay the cost ultimately. And I for one also, Mr. uh Councilmember Sanchez, I don't agree with the way this contract renewal was finished was inconsistent. If you look at Astro and and Kennys, they're different. I want it to be the same. So I spoke with staff about this to make consistent. So what I am proposing is to increase the uh the um the tow, the fee that we charge them from one hundred forty-five to one fifty-three, so that we can recoup that money and the cost is not passed on to the all the towing towing service company. So my suggestion at this point is for for staff to come back with the resolution reflecting the change and come back with an increase in in the city administration fee of hundred fifty-three dollars, and that includes the current fees we collect, one forty-five, plus the equivalent of the contract renewal fee of eight dollars per tow. So that is my recommendation, and I'd like to hear feedback from staff if that will be workable.
First off, uh, if I may, Councilmember Santanis, I just want to say thank you for that uh clarification and that insight. I was not aware. Thank you.
The answer from staff is that that is workable. Um, if the council is on board for doing that, then would the only action would be to approve the agreement. And then uh we would implement the agreement based on the action not including the the renewal fee and that we'd bring an item back, a resolution next meeting to adjust the fee. Um, and then the council could make the decision next meeting whether or not they wanted to approve that fee. We can't speak to it tonight because it's not on the agenda, but we can certainly bring that item back for for further approval. Um, I think should the council look to move that direction, staff would be fine with recommending or bringing that that fee back and 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 supporting that fee increase because of the study that was done, the time motion study last year showed some headroom and including inflation, I think we're fine up to a hundred and sixty dollars or so. Well, they're not creating any red flags. So that would be a certainly a workable solution for this item if that's where the council wants to go.
Uh, Mr. Stewart, uh, if if that is workable, can we include an automatic CPI adjustment every year?
I would recommend that.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you, Mayor, and that's my recommendation.
All right, so Victor, if I understand what you're, I mean, uh, Sunny. Whenever we have a new contract, if we're doing a deal with our tree trimming or with our pest control or with anybody that does business with the city and we have a contract, we're gonna have expectation to have the same kind of operation? Is that what you're looking for?
Uh, no, I'm not.
So why did you just choose a towing after we did uh? How do we decide what we're gonna be, do a fee on and ones we're not gonna do a fee on? How's that determined?
Okay, he- here's my idea. Okay, here's my like, my my reasoning behind that. I'm looking for a renewal fee for a contract between a city and a service provider, and the fee is is paid for by our residents or users, not the city. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not looking for a contract renewal fee, for example, our city attorney or consultant for engineering. These are, these are companies that provide service to the city. They contract with the city, but the payment is made by our residents or the users within the city. That's what I'm looking for.
All right, but again, back to my question, wouldn't you want that same thing from the tree trimmer and the pest control and the?
No, because, no, because if we do that, the city will pay pay it up eventually anyway, because they gotta recoup the cost. If, let's say you want a contract renewal fee with a tree trimming service, if we charge them X amount, they'll pass it on back to us.
No, I understand.
Anyway, that's that's my, that's my reasoning behind this.
All right, so um you heard what staff's gonna be doing. We're gonna reexamine this and impose the uh one sixty possibly with the cost of living included for the future. Is that how we're gonna go?
My recommendation, Mr. Mayor, is one forty-five plus the eight dollars.
That's one fifty-three. We thought we had wiggle room up to one sixty, but maybe.
So what we'll do is if the council's on board, I do a couple notes. Uh, it requires a ten-day notice, so um I think we can get it advertised, get it done. Now, maybe not. It might be a meeting after, because you have to go with the schedule of our newspaper. Um, and then uh we'd bring the resolution back, and if that works for the council, then there's the the only action need to be denied is you approve the item as recommended uh because it's subject to the approval by the city manager and city attorney and employee of the council's desire on this. So that would be it.
But the agreement that we've made with Astro and with Kennys would be consistent. We're just asking them for collect more money on our behalf.
Should the council approve the resolution, we could make, we request them to collect that money on our behalf, but
Right.
I won't presume it until it's done, but yes.
I get it, because I knew that there were some ruffled feathers on how we got this far.
Exactly. That's why I'm parsing my words carefully on that, because until we get as far as we as we do, yeah.
All right, so I think we've got twelve C under our belt. We're gonna move on to.
No, Mr. Mayor, before we move on from uh twelve C, do you want to just uh echo one more thing? I I just want to make sure Carl, um, you know, crosses his t's, dots his i's. I want to be careful that it's not a indirect tax, so we don't, we don't want that. So just want to make sure that we're aware of that. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Berger says it's not. All right, so uh, do you want to do the vote now, you think?
Go ahead. Since this had as much discussion as it has, I would go ahead and take a separate vote on this item before we go to the consent. Because there might, there might be, it might not be a uniform vote.
Do you want a motion or just a vote?
We take the motion and the.
All right, so we got a, need a motion and a second to start a vote process.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to start a vote process.
All right, to discuss the uh, the discussion is about the fees on the on the towing fees. All right, we got a motion. We have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. I was hoping you'd be there for us.
Of course.
All right, so uh, please poll the council.
Councilmember Santanis?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Coops?
Aye. Did you get Mr. Dutton?
He's recused. He's in the waiting.
I forgot him. That was so long ago, I'd forgotten.
I will bring him back in.
Please.
Okay, Mayor Protem Dutton has rejoined the meeting.
Ray, can you hear us? Mr. Dutton, are you there?
Yeah, I'm I'm on its attention now.
All right, well, I just didn't want to take anything for granted. All right, Mr. Hamada, we're gonna do twelve D for you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It'll be short. Um, again, first off, I want to uh thank staff for bringing this forward. Uh, I've been advocating for this uh because I've had contact with the staff at Albert Baxter Elementary. And um I'm glad to see that there was some equipment available and we were able to uh look at, uh, you know, re, look at reworking it and uh and then bring it forward. When you read the report, obviously, uh, in the executive summary, it it makes mention about we cut design immunity and for any, you know, again, for any claim or damages, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and I see that could alarm a reader, and I just wanted uh staff, in this case Len, because uh uh Len's been on this and uh just to uh kind of just summarize that. And then also confirm that, again, this is a viable project because it has some great purpose and it definitely serves for the again, public uh of of health, safety, and welfare.
Yeah, certainly, uh, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, the uh the uh, the, as with any of our capital improvement projects that we do, you know, we always bring the plans before council for designing immunity. It's just to show that they're approved, and it wasn't something that was just randomly thrown together. Um, so it's kind of the the basis behind that in each one of our projects, that there's that there's thought and design put into it. Um, with this, like, like I had had mentioned in the staff report, we uh, at the old signal where the parking structure went in, or before the signal was there, we had rapid flashing beacons. Uh, we pulled them when we built the new traffic signal. We had them here in stock. Uh, the council member um Hamada had had thought about seeing if we could repurpose them over at that location. Uh, because there's no electrical power source there, we, you know, looked around and found some solar-powered ones, and so we went ahead and did a conversion on them and then came up to the striping plan and then also in looking at the location, there um the the curb ramps were not ADA compliant, so it just kind of added a couple more layers on what we have to do out there, but that in a nutshell is what this project is.
Thank you, Len. You're satisfied with that, Mr. Amada?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you, Len, again.
I don't think we're gonna deny it. I think you're. I don't think we're going to deny it. I think you're cool.
All right. No, no, no. Just want to put it out there for the public.
All right, twelve I.
Again, thank staff. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You ready for twelve I, Mr. Hamada? Mr. Hamada, did you want to do twelve I?
Yes, I needed to, I needed myself. In regards to twelve I, the personnel rules. Was there any requirements to add any COVID-related language? I didn't see anything. So, and if it's not required, then that's fine.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the anything COVID-related has been adopted pursuant to the city manager's emergency powers in response to either federal or state requirements. And so those are all temporary. You won't see those in the personnel regulations in front of the city council tonight, simply because they are temporary.
And changeable.
Yeah. All right. Okay. Thank you very much, Carl, staff. Okay, thank.
All right. You're good, Mr. Hamada. You completed your comments?
Yes, that was it. Thank you.
Mr. Sanianes, twelve E.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment on this since the subject is fireworks. If you recall, about two years ago, we talked about enforcement of our ordinances against illegal fireworks. And my recollection is the last one, there was a lot of fireworks, illegal fireworks, again. And two years ago, when we last discussed this item, I recall the city manager talking about some kind of working with the fireworks company and providing some kind of drone surveillance and things like that. So the bottom line is, I'd like to ask the city manager to work with staff and the sheriff's department and come back with a report to us in terms of how can, what else can we do to enforce our ordinances against illegal fireworks more forcefully?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to comment on this item as well. Twelve E, I just want to echo Councilmember Sanianes's comments in the sense of enforcing illegal fireworks even further. And I believe that one year, there were regular vehicles or rental vehicles that were used that didn't look like, you know, your typical sheriff vehicle actually doing the enforcement. And so most folks were in shock when it was actually a sheriff that was coming out of that vehicle to cite them. So just want to say that I heard positive feedback on that type of structure. And just want to support that as well this year, making sure that we double down. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanianes.
You know, Mr. Sanianes, I might add to that. I know that the captain of Lakewood Station, I've been talking over the last several months, and COVID sort of put the kibosh on this. Literally over the last year, we've been talking about Captain Springle coming down, making a presentation to the city council about crime and issues of the city council. This is a perfect one to kick off the new year, probably hopefully a non-COVID year. And what I'll do is I'll have Captain Springle attend a meeting. We'll put him on the agenda sometime in the next month, six weeks, whatever his schedule permits. And then we can take this down with soup to nuts and all the other issues we might have with the council and the sheriff's department. So I think that your timing, your comments is perfect.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sanchez, I mean, Sanianes, twelve H.
Twelve H, okay. I want to put this item, I don't know how, well, first of all, I want to make a comment about Caliva. As you recall, when we got into this journey, we visited their site in San Jose. And I was very impressed with their operations. And I said, I made a comment back then that if all the operators could just operate the way they do, I think this city ballpark would be a model for cannabis business. And at the last meeting we had in the renewal, I was the one who kind of caught the, there was some kind of inconsistency regarding the change in the ownership of the business. And that's why, if you recall, their renewal was very short-term, because they need to come up with some kind of justification and prove that there was no change in ownership. And I want to thank them for providing a comprehensive documentation for their request for modification of their permit. So I don't know, can we confirm if there's someone from NC three, Caliva, or that business? Someone is there? Okay, very good. Thank you so much. The bottom line here is, with so much documentation that I went through, I still could not, number one, the overarching issue to me is, I still could not tell who owns the business. Okay. So I really want to unravel this. And the reason I'm really zeroing on the owners of the business is, if you recall, in Resolution twenty-one oh eight, we allowed the change in ownership within some parameters. So we're flexible. Initially, we didn't allow change in ownership at all. But the sign of the times, there are going to be some changes in investors. And I get that. That's why I was very pleased when we passed Resolution twenty-one oh eight, which spells out the process of modified changing ownership. So my number one question here is, in the application, maybe we can clarify this. Number one first question is, is Caliva a legal entity?
So, hey, City Council, I think you might have heard here with Caliva. Also wanted to note that we also have our council, Kreshid Kojja, on the line. Councilmember Santa Inez, I'm happy to start with maybe just like a one-minute, just like summary of the story, or we can go through a question by question, however you prefer to tackle this.
Will you say one-minute summary?
Yeah, I mean, you know, you mentioned there was a lot of documentation, so I thought maybe I could just give a one-minute summary of it, if that's useful. But again, we can also go through it question by question, whatever is.
Well, I turn on my stop clock. Okay, go ahead with one minute.
Yeah, so I guess here is the one-minute summary. So N three C Systems is the name that you all are familiar with, right? Or Delhi by Caliva. So CMG Partners has always owned and continues to own one hundred percent of NC three systems. So on the initial application that we filed back in September twenty seventeen, I was just taking a look at it right now. You know, so NC three systems applied. And then on the application, it noted, you know, list the proprietors, right, of the business. And we listed, and I think you guys are familiar with these gentlemen by now, Steve, Dennis, and Larry. So Steve, Dennis, and Larry are the three sort of officers of CMG Partners. So CMG Partners is the entity that has always, when we applied, and continues to own one hundred percent of NC three systems. The last thing I'll say, and then I'll pause, because I want to go on beyond one minute. So we did, in January, become a public company. And so obviously, the ownership changes kind of by definition, because we went from a private company to a public company. But still, CMG Partners continues to own one hundred percent of NC three systems. So obviously, there's more I could say, but I don't want to ramble for too long. That's just kind of the quick summary and happy to go through things in more detail.
Okay. So speaking of ownership now, so my first question is, just to set the ground rules here, is Caliva a legal entity?
So Caliva is the name we do business as. So the legal entities here are, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. No, go ahead. I'm listening to you.
Yeah, so the entities, I guess, are N three C Systems, which is the permutee in the city. And then CMG, which again, owns a hundred percent of that and has always, and continues to own a hundred percent. So Caliva is kind of the name we do business as. So there is no legal entity named Caliva. But NC three, CMG are the entities. And again, CMG has always and continues to own a hundred percent. And it's, yeah.
So thank you for clarifying that, because in the application, on page forty-four of the staff report, it says, Caliva is the sole shareholder of NC three system. That's what I'm asking the question.
Right. And so we use the, you know, Caliva and CMG Partners, we kind of use those terms interchangeably. So another way of saying that exact same sentence is, CMG Partners is the sole shareholder or owns a hundred percent of NC three.
But I should clarify, I'm going to, you know, I think you said succinctly, Caliva is the brand name. It's a DBA. So that's it. It's a DBA, so it's not a legal entity.
Correct.
So it doesn't own NC three systems. It does not. Okay. Let me just kind of point it out. Now, when the permit was awarded sometime in December of two thousand seventeen, I believe in seventeen, who owns CMG Partners?
So the officers of CMG.
Who owns it? No, I don't care about officers. Who are the owners?
Kreshid, can you speak to that and sort of give a, like, the right answer then?
Sure. So at the time, we were privately held, and so the, all of the shareholders at that point were private individuals and entities. I believe that we've got, we've got a cap table that we can provide that lists everybody. But the list is fairly long, right? So there were a number of different individuals and entities that owned CMG. It wasn't just one owner or a small group of owners, but multiple owners. So that's, we're happy to provide that to you, councilmember, if that's helpful.
Oh, definitely, because, so CMG is owned by individuals, correct?
CMG was owned, at the time that we applied, CMG was owned by multiple shareholders. That's true.
And the reason I'm asking that question is, it is critical to me, because in the Resolution twenty-one oh eight, it specifies that if there's any change in ownership of twenty-five percent or more, they need to be vetted, correct? If you recall, twenty-one oh eight.
Well, twenty-one oh eight, though, applies to ownership of the permutee. And so when we're talking about the permutee, that would be NC three systems. And so.
Who owns NC three?
CMG.
There you go. So I'm not an attorney, okay? But all these corporations, A, B, C, D, E, eventually, they're owned by individuals. And that's what the intention of this cannabis business is. We want to vet individuals. Because you cannot fingerprint a corporation. You can do a background check. You cannot life scan a corporation. You life scan a person.
Yeah.
Let me just give you some background here. The reason why I'm really after this ownership is we spent a lot of goodwill to our residents to sell the cannabis business, to be on the ballot, to win the ballot. And I cannot reneg on our responsibility to make sure that the operators and the owners are properly vetted. That's my objective.
That's a very fair concern and.
So the bottom line here, Mr. Attorney, is, how can we know that there was no change of more than twenty-five percent if we don't know the owners of CMG from day one?
Well, so let me back up first and say, in our disclosures during the application process, right, we were asked to disclose proprietors, who the proprietors were. And proprietors was defined as persons with a financial interest. At the time, it was only CMG that had a financial interest in NC three. And our team that filled out the application made, I don't know if it was a reasonable error or not, but they made an error in interpreting the word person, and they listed all of the directors and officers of CMG. So that these are the, these are the actual operators, right? These are the folks that you want to fingerprint, and you want to check their background, because they're the ones who are going to be operating the business that's in your jurisdiction. And so obviously, you want to vet those folks. And so those are the folks that were disclosed. So we disclosed all of the directors and officers of CMG. And those are the folks, we omitted CMG, but that was not intentional. Again, it sort of goes back to the issue of you can't fingerprint an entity. You can't fingerprint a corporation. You have to have individuals who are associated with that entity to step up and provide that information. And so that's what our staff did in disclosing Dennis, Steve, and Larry as the directors and officers of CMG. So we were trying to be responsive and provide that information. Here are the folks who are going to be operating the business. They're affiliated with CMG, and they are the proprietors of NC three systems as well. So that was the intention, was to give the names of the folks who are going to be operating the business to the city. Now, you know, there may be folks who have upstream ownership interest, not of NC three, but of CMG, that whole, you know, let's say for argument's sake, you know, one percent, right? Are those folks going to actually be in control of the business with one percent? No, they're not going to be making any kind of decisions, right? The folks who are making decisions for CMG are the directors and officers. And so once again, that is who the staff of Caliva disclosed during the application process. And so we hear you that it would have been appropriate to also disclose CMG, the entity, if I'm understanding your concern here. And, you know, that was an obvious error on the part of staff. But we did list the folks who are actually going to be, you know, directing, managing, controlling the business on behalf of CMG on the application.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but in the definition of ownership, it's defined in two ways. One is a person with an aggregate ownership interest of twenty-five percent or more, okay? Or an individual who will be participating in the direction, control, or management of the permutee. So the names you mentioned, Alan, I know this name already, go into your documentation, you know, Alan Thacker, all these things. They are, they control the business, okay? They are the operators. But there's another layer of the ownership definition. Who are the owners? And that's why I'm having difficulty finding who the owners are unless we know who they are. So how do I know if Mr. John Doe owns one percent? We don't know that, because it is CMG Partners that owns the business.
Yeah.
So we need, from my, I'm just speaking for myself, I need to know who the owners are to prove there was no change of more than twenty-five percent.
Again, though, I think that where, there may be some confusion here is, owner is defined as owner of the applicant, correct? And so the applicant here is NC three. And yes, it's true that there are owners upstream from, you know, CMG. But the owner of NC three is CMG. It's always been CMG. That has not changed. It stayed consistent from October twenty seventeen onward, or September twenty seventeen onward to today. So it's absolutely a true statement that CMG owns one hundred percent of NC three. Now, when we start talking about who is upstream from CMG, that's, I think, where there is, on the proprietor's form, there was some confusion about who needed to be disclosed there. And so, you know, we disclosed, our staff disclosed persons with a financial interest as proprietors. They understood that to mean individuals. And so that's who they disclosed with CMG. So I think, I think that there, you know, there was potentially some confusion when they were looking at the form and filling out the form. But again, the intention was to disclose those individuals who had actual decision-making power and actually running the business on behalf of CMG. So there's no intention to withhold, you know, even if you want to know who the, you know, the one percent owners are, you know, that's something that's in our cap table that we're, you know, we can provide to you. But I think that at the end of the day, Dennis, Steve, Larry, those are the folks who are actually making decisions on behalf of CMG are actually operating the business in your jurisdiction.
I understand your second statement about the operators. I agree with you in that. I think the crux of the issue here is the ownership. I still don't know who the owners are. And so how can I know that there was no change in ownership? I understand there was no intention, and I don't blame you for that. There was no intention to deceive us or to impiling complete report. But the bottom line to me is, to establish the fact that there was no significant change in ownership, we need to know point A to point B. I don't know right now, point A. There's no starting point in terms of ownership for this business. So how do I prove to myself that there was no change? Okay, so the bottom line to me is, I need to know who the owners are of CMG Partners so that when you come back later on for the modification, these are the new owners, I can tell, oh, there was no significant change. That's where I'm coming from.
So I understand that what you're saying is that the ownership above the owner level is important to you and to the city. That's not something that was entirely clear to our staff. That's why they filled out the application the way they did. I think, you know, we are routinely asked to make those disclosures to the state, and we do so. And so, again, it would have been no problem to make that disclosure to the city, because we already do it for the state, right? I think they were responding to the application forms, and that's what they, you know, that's how they interpreted the forms. That's how they filled them out. Um, and, and that's, that's what they, you know, that's how they interpreted the forms. That's how they filled them out. Um, and so if, if it's helpful now to provide uh the cap table, as we've done in the past for the state, we're happy to provide those state filings um, to the city as well, to, to understand kind of what, what point A was, right? But again, from our perspective, uh, the ownership that is material here is the ownership of, of the applicant of the, of NC three. Uh, and so from that perspective, you know, there was no ownership change, but we understand what you're asking for, uh, is the ownership above that level. Um, so that you can understand, you know, what happened um at that level. And we're happy to provide that um, as well. But again, we don't think that that constitutes an ownership change, because again, you know, the own, the actual entity uh, is owned by CMG. That, that has just been, been a constant. And what's happened essentially over the years of NC three operating is it's gone from a, a nonprofit collective, um, become a for-profit company with CMG, um, and then now access public uh capital, uh, the public markets. Um, and so CMG has been with NC three the entire time, uh, going through that, that development, right? And so from our perspective, um, uh, when you say owner, we think of CMG uh, as the owner of all of the licensed affiliates that it has.
Yeah, again, I, I, I'm, I'm not blaming you uh for filing this report, this, uh, this application. Uh, just to remind you, everything is new to us. And let me remind you again, that we learn a lot from your Kaliva business in San Jose. So we're still learning, okay? So that's why, the bottom line to me, I just want to understand the ownership, so that I feel comfortable to prove that there's no significant change in ownership. That's all I'm trying to do here.
All right, I think we all understand. So I, I think we can call it truce here. Uh, you understand uh what we're looking for, the uh list of folks that had financial involvement in CMG? If you provide that, I thi- and then apparently, uh, subsequent to that, you've now changed and uh others will be able to participate in the same venture. Is that correct?
Uh, w-we've become a public company.
All right, so now it's traded on the stock exchange or NASDAQ or something?
And, and I, I think the, the good thing is that as a public company now, you know, we disclose more than, than any other private, you know, to just given that that is, you know, um, a, a sort of priority here. I think the good news is that as a public company, we're subject
You're selling shares in your CMG company, correct?
Oh, yeah, that, that's correct, yeah.
All right, Sonny, you can buy into the place if you want.
Uh, it's, it's only listed in Canadian Stock Exchange. And one more, one more question, uh, maybe clarify this. How many shares were, were issued by N, by um NC three?
How many total shares? Do, do you know that, Kreshid, by chance?
Were authorized.
Um, I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I think if we, we can refer back to some of the documentation that we provided, that might have the authorized number of shares, or we can go back to the articles and, um, and find that. Um, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, you may want to go back to the article corporation.
Happy to, happy to provide that number, um, if that's helpful, for sure.
All right, are we all agreeing now that, that uh your guys are going to be able to provide what uh Sonny was looking for? And we can move on. I, I think we pretty well exhausted the conversation here. Can, you can provide that list of people from October seventeen that own CMG?
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Sonny, you happy with that?
Uh, and also the change now, you know, with the new owner, with, uh, that's the baseline.
No, I know. We, we gotta look at that first, then we'll go to the second part when we
Right.
Yes, but, but you're right, that's the baseline.
Exactly. All right, thank you so much. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, so we've uh we've talked about all the different items here. Does uh, is there a motion to approve the action stipulated on the consent calendar, the balance of the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, uh, if I may, I'd like to pull one more, uh, last minute, twelve F.
All right, go right ahead. Twelve F, we'll pull.
Just a quick question for uh Director Malana. Hey, good evening, PJ. Uh, just a quick question here. I'm looking at the page two, the priorities project list. Um, i-is this a, is this the final list, or is this a list that can be modified? And if so, is this the opportunity to modify it? Um, the only reason why I'm asking that question is, I'd like to know that we're prioritizing Constitution Park. And I don't know, I'm just making sure I don't need to have that on here.
Yeah, yes, uh, this is not the time. This is the final list. Uh, this is uh, would not be the time to adjust or changes, but this list is just a guideline. Um, so for Constitution Park, we have several other grants uh that are uh, in play right now. We have Prop sixty-eight, um, per capita funds that are coming. Uh, and we also have a, an application which has moved, uh, it's a competitive grant as well, but it's moved forward um, several steps with uh the federal grants that are coming from um uh, Congresswoman Linda Sanchez's office. So if that goes, that'll enhance that project. Um, and then we can also use Measure A funds for Constitution Park. So, uh, you'll see in the upcoming budget, there's about twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for the camera system at that park, and we, we are going to use Measure A money for that. So this, these large projects on this list are our general guideline uh for that. Um, and so right now, we have uh the soccer field in play, uh, that we're working on, uh, possible use of Measure A funds, the senior and teen center uh project as well, um, are, are in there. So this, this list really won't, wouldn't change at this point. Um, it, it's just a general guideline for us
But
um, that, that we're using, and we're, we're combining several different projects as we move forward.
But PJ, uh, priorities can change, and we can amend the list if needed.
Yeah, yes, i-if we needed to a, a, amend that list, we, we could. Um, uh, th-this list is very specific just to the Measure A guideline, just giving us a, a general guidance on there.
Would it be, so would it be beneficial, uh, PJ, at a later date to add it uh, to give you a blanket? Because my understanding of reading this uh resolution is it gives you a blanket. Um, you know, authority to, to write grants and relate it to anything on this list. That's kind of what I'm reading.
It, it, it wouldn't necessarily be, uh, we wouldn't need to put Constitution Park on, but what it's allowing us to do is this is just the first step in the process for us to start pulling those funds. For example, one of the largest funding that we're going to need very shortly is the uh project construction plans for the senior and teen center. Um, so it, it allows us to start just pulling those funds for the priority projects. But uh, the council is, is guiding us through this as, as we go through all of these projects and have our, our fingers in different little projects.
PJ.
They're, they're going in there. But Constitution Park itself, yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Let's go ahead and add Constitution Park, just list it as an additional item on the thing, and it still, it's, doesn't change your guidelines. Just adds another measure to it. And whether or not you utilize the funds necessary, it's, it's not a, a huge imperative. It doesn't, it doesn't hamstring us at all to do that.
Okay.
I, I believe it would give you more flexibility. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, PJ, for the answer. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, so I've got a, anybody want to make a motion to uh approve the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to uh approve the balance of the consent calendar. That's everything but item C.
How about I, um, how about item H?
Item H, uh, do uh, we need to wait for uh the information that uh there is going to be provided before we approve that? Go ahead, Ray.
Hang on, I was thinking that that's going to extend them to December thirty-first, and they got that much time to get it together. And we're already in May.
Well, their permit right now is up to May, May twenty-eight. I just don't want to approve the modification unless they really prove that they're, they're in line with um, with the regulation, the rules that we set out.
Right. There's no need to extend the, in deadline. We, we might get this information quickly. If we need to extend the deadline past May twenty-eight, we can do that in the future. Right now, we're fine, I think. I'm just bringing, bringing item back.
So do you want to take a twelve H out?
I mean, it's, we don't have to take any action on tonight, is my point.
All right, so uh twelve H will not be voted on this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Should we ask, should we ask the applicant if he can make the tw- May twenty-eighth deadline? We're, we're talking a month, thirty days. It's already the twenty-seventh.
Is the applicant still on the line? Can you make that deadline?
Kersh, are you still on the line?
We'll contact the applicant tomorrow. If we need to make, if we need to add an item in the future to correct this or extend it, we'll do so. I, I think he can make his deadline.
From my recall, they said that they had the list, so it's just providing the list to the city.
Right.
If they're going to provide the list, there's an issue.
That's, that's what I heard too. I don't think this is going to be a long-term issue.
All right, so we're voting on everything but twelve H.
Yeah, my motion will be everything but twelve H.
Any support for the consent calendar?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we got a motion by uh Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton, supported by Councilmember Sunny Sanyanez. Please poll the council.
Santinas?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tem Dutton?
Hi.
Councilmember Hamada?
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Hi.
Mayor Coops?
Hi. Council reports. Let's start off with uh Councilmember Sunny Sanyanez.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. That's a good segue. Uh, speaking of, I, I really hammered on the trust that the uh our residents gave us, or still continue to give us. Um, and let me just share with you that on April fifteenth, I was invited by the Odd Fellows Lives four sixty-three uh to talk about the city. I uh, I described briefly what's going on in economic development improvements and homeless shelter. And the reason I'm sharing this with you is they're very appreciative of the leadership of the city and the staff. They were responsive. And especially what you're doing with the homeless. So I just want to uh share this information to you so that um, uh, we are, we can be all appreciative of the work that we do and also the support we're getting from our residents. So with that, Mayor, thank you so much.
Did you know George Washington was an Odd Fellow member?
Yes, I do, together with Ronald Warren.
All right, thank you.
I did my research.
Yes, you did. All right, Councilmember Victor Sanchez.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just want to share with the four of you that, um, and, and I've shared these comments or these emails and comments and text messages with staff, um, residents of both Palm on Virginia and Palm on, um, what's the other street over there?
That's your district.
Passage, uh, uh, on Palm and Passage, um, have all expressed um gratitude and, and uh, you know, thank you from, from, for all of us and for staff too as well, for all the work that they've been doing out there. They're, they're noticing that the difference, and they're very appreciative. So I've shared all those compliments with staff, and I just want to make you aware of that. So that's all. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to share, uh, this past Saturday that I attended the Kaiser Drug Takeback uh book at event, and uh it was very successful based on Kaiser's comment. Uh, typically, they average um, six hundred pounds per event. Well, this event was with, with about an hour left, had over eight hundred pounds. So uh, uh, they did quite a bit of collection that day. So everybody's been uh, holding up with their uh drugs during this uh COVID period, and uh, so it's all getting back to the right place. So um, uh, I also want to extend thank yous uh to a couple of our finest from L A S D. Uh, they were protecting the event. And again, Kaiser, um, we've got extended, we've got appreciations uh that the city is working with them, and typically, they have uh two of these per year. So uh, again, they're looking forward to the next one, and uh, uh, they just wanted to thank the city again. All right, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hamada. Mayor Pro Tem Ray Dutton.
Just like to remind uh all our residents that uh a lot of businesses are opening and coming back. Um, mainly restaurants, salons, nail places, and just start patronizing so they can make up for what they lost. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I went by Marino's Restaurant. They opened up last Monday and went there Saturday night, and the crowds were just there were more than I've ever seen before. So people remember our great restaurants, and they're patronizing them, and I'm very grateful for that. So we're going to adjourn our regular meeting, Belfast City Council, to five thirty P M on Monday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. It is nine twenty-five in the evening. We're adjourned.